Good afternoon. We are happy that you're able to join us. The Lawrence branch in ACP is nonpartisan and does not endorse candidates for office. However, we do have a responsibility to help voters make informed decisions when they vote. Our mission is to secure the political, educational, social, economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. I would like to introduce the candidates. Would you give away as I call your name? Sean Pearson. Milton Scott. Stuart Bowley. Chris Flowers. Amber Sellers. Lisa Larson. Bart Littlejohn. Mako Jones. Mako Qua-Jones, sorry. Okay, we will get started with question number one. Why are you running for the city commission and what are your priorities if elected? We will start with Sean Pearson.
Great, thank you Ursula. I'm running for city commission because I focused last thirty years or so of my life on community service and been on politics on the outside and really wanted to get more involved. Been back to Lawrence here recently and excited to be back home. So, top three issues I would look to solve if elected. First of all would be evolving the police. You know, it's something that nationwide is getting a lot of attention. And there's some good ideas, I think, that this group can come up with, working closely with our constituents. Number two is quality of life issues for me, which is a homeless population, which is growing quite a bit. Mental health, equality, and race-related issues. And then finally, how do we grow Lawrence? We know we have a housing shortage, so there's obviously supply issues in terms of both public housing as well as private homes as well. So, what to do some creative things with businesses, you know, from a private-public standpoint. So, those are my top reasons. And then finally, just on a personal note, the one reason why I'm really running is I got to participate in my grandpa's city council runs when I was anywhere from six to thirteen years old. And that was a lot of fun. So, I saw, you know, the work of going door-to-door, which I've been doing a little of. It's a little old-school, but I enjoyed it so far. And just getting to meet people, again, being a little new in town. It's been fun to meet and talk to well over a hundred people about the issues that concern them and what is already a very good city and how do we make it better. So, that's what I'm going to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Milton Scott. I believe you're muted.
Am I? Do you hear me?
Yes.
Again, I'm Milton Scott and I come from a diverse background and professional experience that set me apart from the other candidates. I grew up in public housing and in a community of very high poverty. I obtained my master's degree from KU and become a professional administrator and a member of the American middle class in my adopted home of Lawrence. I spent a lot of time in affordable housing in my career, and so I know the issues locally and nationally. As a single father, I personally encountered a wide range of family and child-related issues. I've also gotten involved in organizations in the community to, for a quest to give back and to learn more about the community. I'm past president of the League of Women Voters. I am also past chair of the Sunset Hill Elementary School Council and also the Free State High School Council and a past chair of Nice Street Missionary Baptist Trustees. My issue is affordable housing, trying to see how we can resolve and end homelessness and chronically homelessness in the community. I also want to look at the city utility rates. Lawrence was tied for twenty-third for the highest water and sewer bill as reported by the Boston World. I want to look at infrastructure, economic development, and policing. I support to strengthen the role of the police review board. The police department needs to do better in transparency. They would ultimately build a community trust. I support measures of the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act of 2021 and ready to adopt provisions for Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Bowley.
Thank you Ursula. Public safety, transportation infrastructure, utilities, and parks and recreation constitute our city's core services. When all of these city functions are working well and are managed cost-efficiently, no one really notices. But when one or more of them is experiencing difficulty, residents feel the effects. Providing the community with these services equitably and well is the number-one job of Lawrence City Government and my top priority. I'm running for reelection to offer continuity and experience to the new city commission. I was first elected to the commission in 2015, served as mayor during 2018, and was re-elected in 2019. We've made progress over the last six years, but there's more work to be done on city finance, utilities, streets, parks and recreation, and public safety. I'll continue to support open processes, thoughtful planning, and skilled professional management to sustain a thriving and livable community that reflects our values, respects our diversity, and anticipates our future needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I'm, I'm running for city commission because I've been attending city commission meetings for a few years at least. And I think I can do a little bit better of a job than some of the ones we have. When it comes to priorities, one of my big priorities is definitely going to be criminal justice reform. We need to end the war on drugs and the next step I think Lawrence needs to take is we need to reduce fines and penalties for magic mushrooms the same way that we did for marijuana. Also, I'd like to see the city try to eliminate cash bail. And we, we, we need to follow through with our police reform and we, we need to make sure that when we're, when we start reforming the police, that we don't let the police start reforming our reforms. So, that's some of my priorities. And something else I'd like to bring to the table is not have more of a reasonable approach when it comes to infrastructure, like the Twenty-First Street Bike Boulevard. We spent too much money on that. I think there was stuff that we built on that that didn't need to be built because they originally, they wanted to have a traffic diverter at Alabama and Twenty-First and they couldn't build it because it was so much over budget. But if you look at it now, you can see that was never needed. So, if that wasn't needed, what's to say all that other stuff that we spent all that money on was needed? We should have started smaller and, and done the minimum and see what was the minimum. So, the next time we build one that we can build it cheaper. So, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Sellers.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amber Sellers. I come to you as a servant leader, a civic, a civil servant, as well as a community organizer and challenger of possibilities in our community. I'm running to bring new leadership to a better Lawrence. I believe that Lawrence is ripe and ready to be a community that sees itself in its leadership and sees itself in its, sees itself in its elected officials. We have come quite a long ways since the pandemic and beyond, and I think we have, we have positioned ourselves to take our, take our leadership in a, in a new direction and to move on some priorities that I feel that our community is ready to go from planning to, to actual implementation and sustainability. I've made it my life's calling to, to serve people who are mostly impacted by the policies that our elected officials create and ensuring that they are engaged in shaping those as well. My public health service experience and knowledge of legislation and public policy will come in handy as an elected official because not only do I know how to inform and engage our community, I know and I understand policy and I know how to implement it. Implementation is key and it's key to ensuring that we move and we progress on policies and plans that we have in store for the community here in Lawrence. I also want to make sure that we focus on implementing equity, inclusion, and diversity initiatives that will be the center of my public policies that go, that focus on centering our collective understanding of infrastructure and that we move past just traditional infrastructure or transportation, but also looking at sustainability and human services. We also need to develop and strengthen and have an efficient, affordable housing plan that grows our community. And lastly, we need to implement strategies to address our economic development through the workforce lens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson. I'm Lisa. You're muted.
Of course I'm muted. I always do that. I'm sorry. So, my name is Lisa Larson and I want to thank the NAACP for having the forum today as well as Ursula for moderating it and all the candidates for, for showing up. That's sometimes the hardest part, I think. So, I'm running for reelection to the Lawrence City Commissions to basically to continue the progress that we are making, to make in our community more of a, more than a place where we just survive, but that we all have opportunities to actually thrive in our community. And I want to continue the work that we have been making to make equity the cornerstone of our decision-making process from everything such as how we repair our streets or where we repair our streets, the program and amenities we have for, for our departments such as Parks and Rec, access to city jobs, city services, and also, you know, how we implement the support structures that we have in place for our most vulnerable population. So, my focus is threefold. The first one is infrastructure. You know, we have been increasing our spending in infrastructure for the past several budget cycles and we need to continue with this work. My second one is economic development, affordable housing, and people without homes. And I realize there's three items there, but I do believe that these three needs are so intertwined that, and they must be addressed as such, as a whole, in order for them to be, to be successful in all. The programs that we have put in place, as in my term, for economic development and affordable housing, you know, we're showing progress. We are showing progress and meeting our goals. But more work is needed to expand these opportunities to small business and workforce housing. You know, as for people without homes, we are refocusing and taking the lead to expand our city services to include homeless outreach, emergency sheltering, and rapid rehousing. And finally, with policing, you know, I don't work, I'm going to work towards implementing a community-based policing model and build the trust that is needed to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Littlejohn.
All right. Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank the NAACP for bringing us together and having this forum. And I'm excited to be on this call and discuss all these great ideas for the city. I came to Lawrence about twenty-five years ago to go to KU and haven't left since. And in that time, I've worked a myriad of jobs and been, become really involved in the community. I'm running for the folks who aren't heard, who aren't accounted for, and work here every day. I see what this sound, this town portrays itself as, what we're missing, and what we can be. The best way I hope to address this is by talking to folks, by starting conversations and building coalitions, by listening to everyone I can, and by bringing everybody along for our, our collective success. I did a little bit of that in Pink Team when I started walking in our neighborhood where we went door-to-door and met all of our neighbors. And I hope to bring that mentality to the city, to the city of Lawrence as well. It's my goal to work as hard as possible for many people as possible so that I can bring us all together so we can focus on issues like equity, housing, and economic development. And when I talk about equity, I'm talking about providing that basic access for everyone so that they can maintain their health, they can have quality and healthy foods, and a safe space to live. And when I talk of housing, I'm talking about actually focusing on the crisis of availability and affordability. And when I talk of economic development, I'm addressing the fact that we tend to overlook the needs of the people who work here every single day. I'm convinced that the only way that Lawrence actually really works is when it works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mako Qua-Jones.
Bonjour. My name is Mako Qua, Abigail Jones. I too would like to thank you guys for hosting this forum. I think that it really gives us an opportunity to delve into some of our personal issues that we bring to the candidacy and city commission if elected. So, why am I running for city council? And I share a lot of my personal stories, personal experience. I don't shy away from that. I ha, I've had kind of a unique personal life, personal growing up, adolescence, adulthood. And I think those are important because they represent a lot of the underrepresented communities' experience. They too are experiencing the things that I have experienced. I've experienced houselessness in Lawrence. I've had to, you know, rely and depend on the resources that Lawrence provides. You know, being a victim of domestic violence, you know, living and working your way through the criminal justice system here in Lawrence has, you know, was an eye-opening experience for me. And so, because of all of these issues, I took an education focus on how can government really play a part in people's personal lives? And so, that's why I focus on that. Some of the issues that are important to me are seeing Lawrence be environmentally sustainable, being a leader in Kansas for environmental infrastructure, environmentally focused, being a leader of environmentalism in the state of Kansas. That's what I want to see. I also care about houselessness because of my personal experience in, and knowing a lot of people who have also experienced houselessness here on Lawrence. And I think those services can be more effective. And the third thing is advocacy in criminal reform. I think that we need more advocates for people going through our criminal justice system because a lot of people going through there that aren't informed of their rights and aren't informed of how they can advocate for themselves and how they can demand more from, from their public defenders when they can't properly provide representation for themselves. So, those are the issues that I care about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to question number two. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the Lawrence City Commission? And how would you address those challenges? Mako Qua-Jones.
And just from being on the outside, looking to our city commission, one of the things and one of the reasons why I'm running is I want to see representation in our city commission. I want to see that our, our city commission properly represents the, you know, the communities here in Lawrence, the variety of communities and the diversity of the communities here in Lawrence. We do have a lot of underrepresented communities here in Lawrence, especially at the city commission level. And I'm not talking about just racial diversity. I'm talking about socioeconomic diversity to people who are apartment renters, people who have experienced that underside of Lawrence, people who come from a variety of backgrounds. The, and you know, I want to see that type of representation in the city commission. And that's one of the, the problems of our city commission. And secondly, one of the issues that I see too is holding our city commissioners accountable. The current structure kind of puts the onus on the voters to reach out to five at-large city commissioners. This by no way means that I endorse a districting model, but I think there should be a more effective way for voters to hold our commissioners accountable and inform them of their interests, their issues, and making sure that they have access to some sort of voice in the city commission. Right now, the voters can often get drowned out or diluted among other issues that seem more, more pressing. But then we rely on their votes and want them to support us without actually, you know, being a representative of that person, of that group in Lawrence. So, these are some of the, the issues that I see that I would like to see in the city commission, whether that's, you know, widespread issues, that's the, as a constituent, as a voting constituent, those are the issues in the city commission for me.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean Pearson.
Thank you. I think, you know, in the next two-year term, I see there's a lot hitting the city commission at the same time. So, give credit to Stuart and Lisa for running again because it's not an easy job from the way I perceive it. And I think it'll be even harder going forward. Obviously, we have major issues. We talked a little bit in the last forum and just mentioned as well. You know, I do like the district model. I do like getting closer to your constituents. I have heard from at least a half dozen folks who aren't sure who they would call, whether it's Stuart, Lisa, or one of the other three members. So, I think that leads to, in a way, people not bringing issues up as much as I could because they're just not even sure who to talk to, even though they know there are all options. I do like a directly elected mayor as a town of a hundred thousand people. That seems like the right thing to do. It brings up a lot of questions about what that person's responsibility would be, what that salary would be, and what that means for the city manager. So, I think that should be looked at very closely. And I agree with Stuart brought this up last time. I do think it should go to ballot. I think it's something we should talk about, put to ballot in 2022. Evolving the police, you know, I think is obviously going to happen in some form. So, how do we do that the right way? How do we take what we read in that study and expand on that? How do we make sure we hold the police department accountable? How do we make sure it better represents the community? It is not nearly enough minority police members, and that should change in both leadership and just day-to-day on the streets. One thing that really, I think, does help, and I've seen this work in other cities, is really having the police more present in the community, either on foot or on bike, you know, building those relationships. So, and finally, I don't have time to get into, but maybe later we'll talk about the budget. That has a lot of consequences over the next two years as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Milton Scott.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Congress is in a position to provide a massive infrastructure to the, to the, to the nation. And I think we should be, as a community, ready to receive those funds and have shovel-ready projects that we can utilize. And I agree with Amber on the fact that the human aspect of that, they're looking at how we can help with the elder care and also childcare. So, those issues are coming up and I think the city should be ready and prepared and have those discussions so that we can access those funds immediately. I've been here in Lawrence for over forty years and I continue to see that the infrastructure, the streets are flooding, even the underpath going over to North Lawrence, that we need to look at how we can better utilize those resources to impact the communities. Because even when they divert traffic to the other community, the streets, the streets are flooding as well. So, we need, really need to seriously look at that. And this has been occurring since I've been here and I think we need to sit down and come up with some solutions for that. The other thing I think that we need to be looking at is the challenge is that the eviction warrant warrant is ending July 31st and it can add a lot of people to the homelessness issues here in Lawrence. And I think that we need to look at ways how we can solve those and get the service providers and nonprofits on board to make sure that the processes that they have are made friendly so that way people can access those resources. The city received 1.6 million dollars for homeless issues and I think that we need to make sure that individuals are able to ask, access it even through tenant-based assistance or support services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Bowley.
The city managers recommended budget was just released for, for our next meeting. And, you know, looking at that, I'm really feeling like the biggest challenge facing the commission is finding balance between the revenues and expenditures and budgeting the general fund and making the transition to full adoption of the strategic plan. We need to focus on providing excellent core services, for example, the streets, safe drinking water, public safety, sanitation, recycling, stormwater systems, transit, parks, and recreation. The way to do this is to successfully implement the strategic plan, which was developed with community input and is designed to meet the needs of the community. The second major challenge facing the commission is remediation of the farmland site. The money received by the city in 2010, when we took over the property, will be gone at the end of next year. But the remaining cost for cleanup will be around forty million dollars. We need to get more money from the state and federal governments or these costs will be borne by our residents. So, there are some significant challenges facing the next city commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing the Lawrence City Commission? And how would you address those changes? Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I think the two biggest challenges facing Lawrence, like long-term, it's going to be keeping the city affordable to live in. And like in the near term, I think the biggest challenge is going to be criminal justice reform. But specifically, the police reform because that's already, it started happening now because we got the outside consultant, Citygate, we got their, their review, and they've already made recommendations. And I, I agree with a lot of those recommendations. So, but I think one of the biggest challenges is to that is we got, when, right now, we've got the plan, but we haven't heard from the cops yet. Like, we've had plans before and we got to make sure that we don't let the cops talk their way out of it. Like, we, we could have the cops wearing their, their body camera footage, like where they don't turn it off and on. We could just have it going all the time. But I think, I'm pretty sure the cops talked their way out of that one. So, when we take the, when we start making reforms, we got to, we got to question the cops and prosecutors and not let them talk their way out of what's best for the city and us and doing what's best for them instead. So, just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Sellers.
All right. So, I want to start by saying that when looking at what would be the biggest challenges facing the Lawrence City Commission, I want to first say that I do believe that our city staff, as well as our city commission, needs to recognize when addressing these challenges, when to take the lead on initiatives, as well as when to elevate the work of our community partners in addressing this work. And so, several of the pieces that I'll talk about really speaks to that of knowing when, as city commissioners, we recognize our role in leading this work, but also understanding that this effective community engagement and community implementation of such challenges starts with bringing our community partners in and having, elevating them to do the work as well. So, starting with workforce diversity, I feel like that is coming out of a pandemic and knowing what we have seen across the country as folks are slowly wanting to enter the workforce. And we know that it has to do with the fact that there are jobs that lack a livable wage. jobs that lack a livable wage. We really have positioned ourselves to come up with strategies to advance our economic development opportunities here in Lawrence, whether it's through easily tech or through bioscience, or even in our public schools with our career center. So I think there's a way for us to utilize those pieces, as well as to infuse federal dollars, ARPA dollars, to build up some some foundations, some programs that could be able to help diversify our workforce in industry as well as in skills. And then I also want to talk about housing. I see Lawrence as a forever home for me, but I am someone that makes a moderate income, and oftentimes it's cost burden. So I'd like for us to utilize the governor's housing needs assessment to help drive us in in creating that housing plan in order for us to address affordable housing. So I think those are two challenges that we need to look at as commissioners that will, that we face.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you very much. As I said in my first question, you know, the, my focus is going to be the infrastructure, affordable housing, economic development, homelessness and policing. And these all tie in with our strategic plan. And these are the most often challenges we heard about from our community members as to what they wanted to see addressed. And it's also the same, pretty much the same items that I hear about every day, one-on-one, when I have conversations with community members. So these are all, as we know, big challenges facing our community, but I think even the bigger question in all this is, how do we pay for it? Because we cannot successfully, we cannot be successful at meeting our challenges without addressing the need to fund them. If we don't address the need to fund them, then the statements become hollow and meaningless, and we will have spent, you know, a lot of time and valuable resources for nothing. So it's going to, I believe it's going to take a combination of several things, of finding efficiencies within our programs, reallocating some of our resources based on our community vision, making cuts in other programs or services. And the last resort for me will always be to raise property taxes. But to meet the funding needs is going to take a lot of thoughtful conversations with our community about the best ways to ensure that our challenges don't become hollow and meaningless.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Littlejohn.
Thanks. And to start, I would just like to go ahead and expound on what I briefly mentioned in the first question. The three things, the three issues that I would concentrate on. First, equity. Making sure that we're getting regular health screenings out to the community in a way that works for different populations. Continuing to foster partnerships with entities like Just Food, with established relationships with those who have needs and build upon those. And address the food deserts in our town, and implement concrete methods to go ahead and fix them. Housing. We need a comprehensive housing plan specifically addressing affordability and availability. Can continue to find new ways for partnership on that housing plan. And also, let's reexamine our zoning regulations and our housing, our housing plans as well in that regard. And also, N-FIL and single-family homes are helpful, but they can't be the only solutions. The city should also look at programs like Rent Zero and other tenant-based organizations to get a real sense of the concerns. Last, economic development. We can implement a plan that works for all by focusing on the best ways to help those who are currently working here. How we want to address downtown and how we want to address infrastructure. I think we need to foster policies that help the people who play an integral part in this town, as opposed to the predominantly focus on outside entities. We need to make sure that there's a close link between our business and our secondary entities, providing an avenue to live, work, and continue education in this community for our new graduates. We need to find the balance between historic preservation and development for our downtown, because people, not buildings, make our downtown. Last, it's essential that we find a way to incorporate affordable housing into the equation to make sure that we're not leaving anyone behind. I hope that we can go ahead and tackle some of these issues, and those are just general outlines that I've just been able to think about that we can go ahead and address.
Thank you. We will have question three. How can the city commission improve access to affordable housing and end houselessness in Lawrence? Bart Littlejohn?
Thank you. Specifically, I think we need to make sure that housing is affordable and available for all of our citizens. We need to push to expand our reach to make sure that we're exploring every possible solution with partners to address the problem. A lack of supply is disrupting our ability to both help the people who are transitioning from housing, houselessness into housing, and those who are simply looking to build equity for their family's future and everyone in between. Because unfortunately, housing still remains the only way in this country to build generational wealth and equity through that. In addition, there's a lack of available resources to go ahead and keep people in those homes. I I know that my campaign and people in my campaign, myself as well, I know that Milton talked before addressing the eviction crisis coming up. And those folks who were faced with that crisis want to go ahead and find those resources and want them to be readily available. I know from my part, I I found that not to be the case. So we can make those available, we can make it a lot easier to go ahead and keep those folks becoming houseless, because it's so much harder when they become houseless to go ahead and lift them back up. And lastly, we need to support our social services. These people have long been overworked, understaffed, unsupported. We need to prioritize, prioritize, sorry, prioritize programs like housing first and make sure our funding matches our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maka Quad Jones.
Sorry about that, hit the wrong button. So some of the housing issues in Lawrence, which I said that I have actually are very familiar with. First of all, I want the city commission to understand houselessness, that we're not just talking about low-income communities. We're not just talking about mental health stuff, but we're talking about post-COVID families who have extended their resources, maybe on medical care or caring for a family member. And so houselessness has a variety of people experiencing it. I think that creating some sort of trust fund or participating in housing trust fund can really benefit these families. I think that passing a resolution, not an ordinance, but a resolution that would discourage evictions and raising rents during this time period to allow for people to stay in their homes. And I think that making the resources for people who are about to get evicted, or for people who can't pay, making those resources more effective and exploring why they're not being affected now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean Pearson.
Yeah, I think obviously this is a big issue for all of us. First of all, I'd like to see more private partnership with the government here to help solve the public housing shortage that we have. That can come in many forms, but I think being creative with private business and, you know, Realtors Association and all stakeholders in the community, we have a lot of smart people here. How do we get together and solve this problem, because it's not going away? And as mentioned, with evictions getting ready to go up, the homeless population is only going to increase. And that's, you know, people that typically want to be homeless, they're just low income. So how do we find some more affordable solutions there? And then, again, we, you know, having people camp at South Park is not a long-term sustainable idea. We need to have more homeless shelters here in town. We're obviously having a bit of a situation, and a major one right now, in terms of leadership. But how do we get effective leadership and housing available for those that actually do want to be housed overnight? Not everyone does, but those are two key areas for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Milton Scott.
Again, I think that homelessness and affordable housing in our community are top priorities for me, along with examining the water and utility sewer rates. We need to look at how we can fund these different types of programs. The city just received 1.6 million dollars of federal fund to aid and fight homelessness. And that includes developing and acquiring congregants, non-congregant shelter units. I want to be able to utilize these funds to solve some of these issues. We have until 2030 to do that, and I think I can get a point to make sure that we are successful. Again, I want to do public-private partnership, low-income housing tax credits, the housing trust fund, and the CHODO program, which gives the capacity to develop affordable housing in our community. And also look at the different plans that we can build duplexes or triplexes as affordability for individuals. I think we should continue looking at those options as well, as well as utilizing the tenant-based rental assistance, the assistance for those to offer homeownership opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Bowley.
Thank you. When I was first elected in 2015, I worked with leadership from Douglas County and the Housing Authority to start up and fund the New Horizons program, which established vouchers and support for homeless families with children. I worked to establish the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and served on that board for two years. I supported the 2017 Funding Initiative for Affordable Housing, which was endorsed by the voters that year. I now am advocating for a significant utility assistance program by the city, in addition to providing the public the opportunity to contribute to utility assistance while paying their water bills. The city managers recommended budget for 2022 provides both focus and meaningful funding for our efforts in combating homelessness. I support the city's strategic plan, which includes strong welcoming neighborhoods as an outcome. As we move forward with the Downtown Master Plan, I'll advocate for both increased residential density and permanent affordable housing downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and when it comes to houselessness, I'd like to see more projects, like I think it's called the Monarch Village, where it was the the small little dwellings. I really like that, but when it comes to affordable housing, I like a lot of the points Bart Littlejohn has made, so I agree with some of that stuff. But one thing I would just like to add is that we talk about the the cost of housing, but that's not the only thing that determines what is affordable, because affordability also depends on one's income. So we need to make sure that, we need to have more of our residents making a living wage and not, you know, just like minimum wage. And one step we can do that is we need to make sure all the city's employees are making at least a living wage. Because if you go to that website, some of the positions are starting between like nine to 11 dollars. I don't think that's really a livable wage for this town, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Sellers.
Thank you. So as a student, as a public administration student who focused on urban administration, I wanted to say real quick, I fangirl every time Milton talks about housing, because I focused on housing in my capstone. But speaking to the point of strong welcoming neighborhoods, we need to understand that houselessness, homelessness, and affordable housing is a multifaceted, interrelated concern or problem in our community, that one solution is not going to be the one all, and we've heard that from several other candidates. I want to encourage our commissioners to focus on intentionality as far as having a robust, comprehensive housing plan. And I strongly encourage everyone that's listening to this to go to the governor's housing needs assessment survey and take that survey, because I believe that work is going to reciprocate and be a sounding board for the work we do here in Lawrence. We also need to look favorably at incentives to spur housing rehabilitation. We've heard that from other candidates. We heard, we talked about subsidizing housing to fill the funding gap, as well as creative partnerships in rental management and co-op housing. And to the point of Mr. Flowers, economic development. We can't continue to have cost-burdened housing in this community if we don't have the wages that that reflect, that can balance that out.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you very much. So the work that we've been doing on affordable housing over the, my term as a commissioner is that we are meeting the goals that were set forth in the 2018 Housing Market Analysis Study that was done. We're on track with those goals right now. So from 2016 to 2020, I approved the investment of about four and a half million dollars for affordable housing projects, as well as support services. This money was used to directly impact, in a helpful way, 445 families to either buy their home, to build their home, to renovate their home, or to rent their home. This is progress. Is it enough? No, we need to continue moving forward. But in, you know, I believe the policies and the programs that we put in place during my term are beginning to work. But we need to stay focused on our goals, and we need to be open to modifying our goals when we see that there's a better way out there. So from 2016 to 2021, regarding the people without homes issue, I approved expenditures of about three and a half million dollars to ensure programs were available to help address some of these issues. And developing a successful program will require a team of very diverse entities, which include city, county, or service providers that would be willing to sit down and collaborate as a team. And to lead the effort in addressing the homeless and available or affordable housing issues, we, the city is expanding our community development division to include not only affordable housing issues, but to also include homeless outreach, emergency sheltering, and rapid rehousing. This new, this city division, it will be called the Housing Initiative Division. The expansion of this division is a must, if we're going to give our community the best opportunity to build a coordinated, strong, and focused program for addressing people without homes in affordable housing. We're going to be following the Built for Zero model, housing model, which has been successfully implemented in numerous communities across the nation to effectively end homelessness or significantly reduce the population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to question four. What can the city commission do to increase opportunities for minority-owned businesses? Chris Flowers?
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I'd just like to thank you for doing this question, because this one actually, this caused me to think, and I'm the first one up. So I would just like to say, I'm not sure exactly what we're doing, but if we're not doing it, I'd like to look at supplier diversity, I think, is where we need to make sure that the businesses, that that businesses that the city is doing business with, that there, some of them are at least minority-owned. So that's one thing we could do, and I was also thinking that, like, I know one of the basketball players was at City Hall trying to push through a scooter program, and that just got me thinking, what, like, now that the name and likeness stuff's going in, like, are we going to have college, like, minority athletes that have money? Can we get them to invest in businesses so we can have more minority-owned businesses? Just because we should be taking advantage of some of what we have, and I think our basketball team might be something, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maka Quad Jones.
One of the things that city commission can do, and I think this is just one, one thing that I would like to see is helping build the capacity of minority-owned businesses to compete for, at the level that that other businesses are doing, or when it comes to city procurement. I think city procurement can really benefit a lot of local and minority-owned businesses in the city of Lawrence, which has its problems, but I think those can be mitigated by helping build the capacity of these businesses within the city of Lawrence, and that would show that the city of Lawrence not only supports these minority-owned businesses, but it also wants to keep those businesses here and help those minority businesses in the long run. I think putting money into them one time may not help them in the long run, but maybe federal government-backed loans could help, but city procurement would be one way that I see could help.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you. So we, part of my term on the commission in 2017, we passed an economic development program called the Catalyst Program, and it's been successful in bringing new manufacturing companies to Lawrence and also encouraging the expansion of existing manufacturers. This program has brought 70 million dollars with a capital investment into our community, along with the prospect of between about 440 and 500 jobs that pay at or above the living wage. So to increase the the opportunities for minority-owned businesses, I believe that we need to expand this program and scale it to fit small businesses that would encourage minority, or minority members of our community to start a new business, to expand or grow their existing business. I think this would be a great segue in order to help our small businesses and help those in the minority community to to expand their business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean Pearson.
Yes, thank you. Two things come to mind right away. For me, I think, starting early, really, just mentoring, you know, people that are school age into college about what it means to own a business is a great kind of place to start, and I don't And I don't think there's enough attention or funding put towards those type of programs, because becoming a small business owner isn't something you wake up, you know, in your 40s one day and decide you're going to do that, right? It's kind of a lifelong thing to be thinking about and moving towards. The second part is a little more obvious to me. There's a lot of big companies, and I work at one of them, that have specific programs to actually help provide funding for minority-owned businesses. So really tapping into those existing banks here in town, and I work at one of them, those programs are available. And I just think they're underutilized, and part of it's on us. We need to advertise that more. That's a differentiator for us at the bank, and I'm excited to see that aspect grow, because that really could help solve some of our challenges on Master Street especially. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Milton Scott.
You know, I think the basic, just bring women and minority-owned business leaders to the table, find out what their needs are, and foster policies that remove barriers that prohibit minority businesses from fully participating and accessing resources, and remove any disadvantages and cultivate that business relationship. I think we also should look at establishing a regional minority business venture program, provide incentives and possibly tax abatements opportunities, and seek out state and federal funds for opportunities in the future, and require non-minority-owned businesses to explain what is, what they're doing to advance equity. When awarding bids to non-minority businesses, provide incentives or require them to include or reach out to women and minority businesses as the subcontractors. And so these are the measures I think would be, including what everyone else has said, that would have women and minority businesses feel like they're part, integral part of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Littlejohn.
Sorry about that. Thank you. I believe that the best way to help, honestly, through economics, namely, you show how much you care about, how many funds are devoted to that purpose. So things like disassembling those economic barriers for black folks and other people of color, making sure there's a livable wage, things like improving access and decreasing the cost of childcare, and parental, and encouraging parental leave within the workforce, working with employers in town to reduce the barriers to employment and ensure equity, i.e. like, things helping people with transportation and necessary skills, working with the justice system on no-to-low-cost ways for people to navigate that system, making sure that there's a stable supportive pipeline of folks going to higher institutions like Peaslee, KU, or Haskell, fostering a supportive environment for BIPOC and entrepreneurships through incubators, mentorships, and small business startups. All these ways to broaden access to minorities, to economic development funds, helping them to manage those funds, and making sure that we have a system that is sustainable to pass that knowledge on to those who come after us.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Bowley.
Thanks. There have been some great responses to this question. It's hard to add something, but in the city managers' recommended budget, there is one staff person who is being added to the economic development staff. And I think using that to accomplish some of the things that, you know, have been talked about. For example, with Sean's outreach programs at the bank, and Milton's, you know, bringing people in to talk about the barriers and how they can be overcome. But I think also using the Small Business Administration, the federal programs would be helpful here as well. You know, we do have the Catalyst Program that's designed to increase the major business investment. As we increase the overall economic activity, we'll increase the opportunities for small businesses to, you know, start, grow, and thrive. So becoming more informed about federal and state programs that may benefit minority-owned businesses will enable our economic development staff to provide meaningful assistance to them. So, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Sellers.
Thank you. So our city's economic development plan, as well as the city's strategic plan, identifies opportunities to provide resources and support for small and medium-sized minority businesses to grow as well as to expand. Our city has the opportunity to elevate this work through our community partners. So while I do appreciate the mentioning of the need to conduct equity and inclusion studies, I would like to see this work being done by our local SBAs, as well as our Chamber of Commerce to develop initiatives to not only address the barriers to economic opportunity, but also look at ways to provide recommendations to the city to address access to capital, as well as tax abatements and incentives for startup and job growth. I'd also like for us to explore the Douglas County Core, which is a new initiative called Connecting Opportunities for Resources and Entrepreneurs, and had the opportunity to speak to the core part of this group and their emphasis on engaging minority, as well as women, to expand shared service networks for small businesses, as well as the needs for incubators. We have also the opportunity to leverage federal ARPA dollars through the county, as well as through those dollars directly from the federal government to the state to do economic innovation and revitalization that centers on diversifying our resources and growth from within.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to question five. How can Lawrence be a leader in police reform? Milton Scott?
I think Lawrence can be a leader in police reform by adopting the measures of the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. I know some of those things are in place, but I think we also need to look at requiring police officers to collect that on investigatory activities. There is some provision of the acts that provide public safety innovation grants to the communities to reimagine and redevelop concrete and just equitable public safety approaches. So I support that community-based programs and what we can do to reimagine safety in equitable ways in the community. The other part is that the municipal and district courts need to be involved in reform and how it operates on issuing bench warrants for minor infractions and discouraging police for stops for minor infractions. But there's some work going on in the city that we also look at the district court to be helpful in this capacity. Again, we're all in this together. I think that we need to hear from the community at large, as well as the rank and file of the police department, to come together on this particular issue. There's a time for us to be ahead of the game, and there's resources out there for us to do that.
Thank you. Next, we have Stuart Bowley.
The executive summary of the recent study of our police department states, "In listening to department members of all positions, they are universally proud, want to serve Lawrence, and want to continue to improve. They do care about their community, but are not as engaged with the community as much as contemporary policing necessitates." As the Listening and Interview summary in this study will report, "The department is very disconnected with many racial and ethnic groups. There is also tension over the CPRB and how to provide effective community oversight." So the report provides 60 key findings and 75 specific recommendations. For example, finding number three refers to current weaknesses in community policing, and recommendations two through nine provide specific action items that can address those weaknesses. It also lays out needed improvements in training and data gathering. The comprehensive study of the police department provides an opportunity for our community to come together. We should work together to implement the report's recommendations.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers. I've spoken just a lot about police reform in the past, and I just want to say what we don't need is the City Gate recommended increased neighborhood watch. If I'm elected city commission, that's not happening. I'm not a fan of neighborhood watches at all. And what we need to be, to be a leader, we need to be asking tough questions. Like last summer, the people started showing up and recording the police, so the police stopped giving out addresses on dispatch. And the reason they said was like the people were interfering. Yet, no one asked the cops to show proof, because I mean, if they're interfering, wouldn't the cops have footage of it with their body cams? No one asked, none of our city commissioners asked to see proof when the cops said that citizens were doing something. And that's how we need to start, is when cops say something, we need to ask questions to verify that they're telling the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Sellers.
All right, I'm coming fast and quick. So first, I firmly believe that public health and safety are deeply rooted in social justice. And we do need to address our police reform from a perspective of community, as well as in our schools. So first, after reviewing the City Gate report, in addition to the recommendations from our community police review board, as well as the Governor's Commission on Racial Equity and Justice, I see that the department must first identify measurable outcomes and strategies to operationalize equitable policing in practice, policy, as well as in training pedagogy. I also would like to take one of the points made in the City Gate report that identified that our four high priority dispatch calls, which were domestic disturbances, domestic battery, car accidents, and overdoses centered around social issues. So there is an opportunity for us to see the department address these social issues through collaborative strategies with community agencies to reduce the types of calls. We also have the opportunity to review the 2020 ad hoc pre-trial justice task force, task force report from the state, and we can look at ways to address no-knock warrants, use of chokeholds, as well as monetary bonds for mandatory release. And when it comes to our schools, I strongly advocate for our public schools to switch to a restorative justice reform and framework so that we can end the school-to-prison pipeline.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you very much. So recently, we conducted a top-to-bottom evaluation of our police department, and from that study came 65 recommendations, or 65 findings and 75 recommendations. And I believe implementing many of these recommendations can help us become a leader in the community, in community-based policing. But before we can do this, you know, we must address the issue of trust between all of us. You can't build a program, you can't rework a program if you don't have trust between all parties. It stated very, was stated very plainly in the police study that our minority community members do not trust our police department. It's going to take very frank discussions between all parties to address this problem of trust. You can't develop a program, you can't write policies about this. It has to be addressed in face-to-face conversations between all parties, and it must follow with watching the actions that occur after these conversations.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Littlejohn.
Thank you. I believe that we need our police department. But in order for them to be effective, we need to make sure that there's accountability, oversight, and transparency. We should continue to make sure that there are mental health and social service professionals there to handle those calls that might not necessarily require full force. We should also make sure that there's oversight and accountability through a metric tracking software so that we know what we're missing and how to improve. And we should consider less economically punitive methods in the bail bonds process. All of this should happen within the scope of a program that communicates their problems when they happen, not at the last possible moment. That transparency, transparency is the only way that we'll regain the trust that Lisa was alluding to, that has been waning in one of our most important city services. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Maka Kua-Jones. I'm sorry, you're muted.
So I agree, one of the things that we need to do is to build that trust, fix the respect for our law enforcement, and understand the position they put themselves in when it regards to safety. And so these are things that the community needs to remember about our police department. However, I do want to see actionable items that the Lawrence City Commission can do to improve police reform, bias policing, and excessive use of force and police brutality. Accountability oversight, community respect, and limiting the scope of policing are core issues. Requiring the police to force to adopt policies that reduce the use of excessive force can prohibit acts such as neck holds, head strikes, and with a hard object, and using force against persons in handcuffs. Racial bias training, in addition to building skills and problem-solving, conflict mediation, de-escalation tactics, should all be required. There's an insufficient amount of training focused on anti-racism, implicit bias, mental illness, age-appropriate responses, problem-solving, mediation, or cultural competency. These are ways that we can improve relations with our community police force.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean Pearson.
Lots of great responses, so I'll just add a few thoughts. I think we should set it best, when trust is broken or breached, you have a significant problem. So I think we have to start there, whether it's reviewing the findings on a public forum, where we have the police and concerned citizens there with a strong moderator. Those could be contentious discussions, right? I think that's a good way to start. And also, I'd like to hear, based on all the different findings and recommendations, what actually our citizens think will be most effective, rather than us as commissioners guessing at what we think are the best ones. So I think some good, healthy debate in terms of how we do this. But I agree, we need the police. The vast majority are very good at what they do. But there's more education needed, there's more training needed, data collection practices to make sure that we're utilizing today's technology to have the best police force that we possibly can. And as I mentioned before, really, just that face-to-face interaction, much less threatening on foot or on a bicycle than your squad car. And that just changes perception. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will go to question six. This is the last question. What would you like to say in closing? Amber Sellers?
So again, thank you, Ursula, and to the Lawrence and AAACP for hosting a primary candidate forum for the community and for allowing this opportunity to share a little bit about our insight. So we can do great things as a city, and with leadership that possesses the expertise and fresh perspective needed to do the work, we can build a connected city that lives up to an unmistakable identity of being a prosperous, equitable city for all who wish to call Lawrence home. In four weeks, we will have a monumental election, a historic election, having six candidates move on to fill three spots. And so I want everyone to know that we have witnessed many bright spots in our community, and I know and love Lawrence for what it is and what it has the potential to be. And I believe that my voice can be a catalyst to give this community the leadership that it needs to take planning, to implementation, and to sustainability. So for those who would like more information about myself and my campaign, please visit sellersforlawrence.org, and thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you, Ursula, and thank you to the NAACP for putting this forum on. And I want to thank my fellow candidates for being here today and providing more insight about who we all are. So if elected, I'm going to continue to listen to you, just as I have in my past years, and I'll try to find solutions to your challenges and see how they work with what our vision is for our community. I would just ask that you look at my record, and on my website at larsoncitycommission.com, I provide significant detail on many of the issues that we face today and that we even discussed today. And if you like what I've been doing, then I'm going to ask for your vote on August 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Littlejohn.
Thank you. We see ourselves as progressive, but that's not the reality. Because how can we truly be progressive if we have the health, housing, and economic disparities that we have? How can we be authentic if some parts of our population are continually treated in this disrespectful manner by those who are placed in the highest authority? And what does it say that the things we are saying now are the same things we've been saying before, without any sort of result? But I believe the change is within us. I think it'll take getting to work and going out to the community, letting people know that they're not alone, that they'll be heard, more importantly, that they matter. Most importantly, to help me do this, I need your vote on August 3 and November 2 to make this a possibility. I still believe in Lawrence, and I believe in all of you. Thank you for your time today, and everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you. Next, we have Milton Scott. I believe you're muted.
Thanks again, NAACP, for hosting this forum. It's an opportunity for us to share ideas on the future and vision for the city. I think the city needs to position itself to be prepared to receive additional funds from the state and federal governments to address the challenging issues in our community, not only the funds, but also advice and direction and best practices that are out there. My campaign is guided by the three Cs, collaboration, cooperation, and compassion are principles of good government. That is why I'm asking for your vote for city commission. But I want to leave you with these party words. Coming together is a beginning. Stand together is progress, and working together is success. Let's get together to work and make mine a even better place, a better city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stort Bowley.
Thank you, Ursula, and thank you to Lawrence Branch for this opportunity. You know, it's been an honor for me to serve the community for six years as a commissioner. I've really gained an appreciation of what a team the city commission needs to be. You know, it's your team. I'd like the opportunity to serve on your team again. I pledge to work with whomever you elect and would appreciate your vote in the primary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I thank you, everyone, just for having me. And I just like to say, you, the good, what I like about how our elections work is you get three votes. So to everyone who's considering, you know, who they want to vote, take your top three right now. Is someone, is one of those top three going to advocate for the end of the drug war? Is that, is one of those candidates going to decriminalize mushrooms? And let's, and, and reduce the fines and penalties? Because that's the one thing I do think I'll be, I, if you just give me one other person of these, this group to, who will be willing to go along with decriminalizing mushrooms, I think I can get it through. So just for your consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sean Pearson.
Great, thank you. Also appreciate the NAACP and you, Ursula, for hosting this event. Also like to thank my fellow candidates. When I started to run, I had no idea what to expect. I didn't know if it was positive, so I thank you all for that, and you guys are the reasons for that. So this has actually been a fun process. For me, I do strategy work for a living. So what comes to mind is, we've talked about, you know, four excellent areas today, and we've talked about other ones in the prior discussion. There's so much, I mean, at the city commission, for me, it's about priorities, right? How do we make sure that our budget is sound? We do have a lot of revenue, but we have a lot of programs that we'd like to fund. So how do we do that and keep taxes the same is important to me. How do we evolve the police? And I think we should start on that as soon as possible. And then equality issues, you know, and we talked about minority-owned businesses. That's dear to my heart and something I really want to focus more time on in my current role, but also as a commissioner as well. So, thank you, and I'll ask for your vote starting next week, all the way through August 3rd. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Maka Qua Jones.
I thank you guys for allowing us to speak and share more about some of the goals that we have for Lawrence. If elected, I think, like I've mentioned before, you know, when you get those three votes for city commission, make sure that those people represent the issues that, that are affecting you now. We're going to have a lot more issues post-COVID, and so there's going to be a lot more people looking to our commissioners for action items, not just talking about the issues, but actually doing things. I do have a background in environmental law and policy. One of the reasons why that's, it's important, for example, I don't know if people know this, but when the hot temperatures increase, crime goes up. When we have those freezing temperatures, we have more people looking for warm places to stay, so they go to jail for that. And so these, this is why environmental policy is important. I have that policy background. I'm ready to enact those policies. Maka Qua for office, thank you.
Thank you very much. In closing, I would like to thank the candidates that attended our forum. I would like to thank the audience out there that's listening and that you gathered enough information to make an informed decision. Voting is a right that everyone should exercise. The last day to register to vote in the primary election is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. The primary election is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. And with that, I'd like to thank all the candidates once again. And in closing, thank you very much. Bye, have a nice evening.
Thank you.